Support for Central Florida Public Media comes from the University of Central Florida, offering their Master of Science in Data Analytics program designed to enhance skills in data analysis and machine learning. The new artificial intelligence track offers specialized courses to deepen understanding of AI technologies and their applications. More at ce dot ucf.edu slash data.
You are listening to Engage on Central Florida Public Media. I'm Sharon Stone. Coming up, the Florida Legislature is taking another shot at passing the Crown Act, a bill protecting students and workers from discrimination over hairstyles. And tomorrow is Valentine's Day. We'll dive deep into the number one gift of romantics, chocolate. But first, the Florida Legislature is meeting today to vote on a comprehensive series of bills targeting illegal immigration in the state. This is the third special session on the issue in less than a month. Central Florida Public Media's Rick Brunson has been covering the session and joins Engage now. So first, just bring us up to speed on what's happening today, Rick.
Hi, Sharon. Let's back up just a bit. The overall thing to remember here is that President Trump campaigned on stopping illegal immigration and executing, in his words, "the largest mass deportation in history." But he doesn't have enough federal law enforcement agents to carry that out. He has about 5,000 federal immigration agents at his disposal. There are an estimated, depending on who's counting, between 11 and 13 million immigrants in the US who are here unlawfully. So there's no way 5,000 federal agents can even begin to deport that many people. And under the Constitution, the federal government is charged with protecting the border and enforcing immigration law. So he's turning to states with Republican-dominated legislatures who support his agenda for help. Hence, here in Florida, the Florida Legislature this week is in its third special session in less than a month to pass legislation to help Trump out. But there has been some hitches along the way. Two weeks ago, in its second special session on immigration, the legislature passed a bill that it called the Trump Act. But Governor Ron DeSantis immediately threatened to veto the bill. He called it weak and ridiculous and swampy. But what he said he really didn't like about the bill is that it made the State Commissioner of Agriculture, and not him, the state's chief immigration enforcement officer. And in the Senate, there were not enough votes to override a veto by the governor. So for the past two weeks, House and Senate leaders have been negotiating with the governor to revise the bill, which they introduced this week in the third special session.
Okay, so here we are. What are they voting on today?
Well, there are a lot of items in this legislation. Here's what it does. The biggest thing is it creates a power-sharing arrangement for who runs immigration enforcement in the state. It creates a state board of immigration enforcement made up of the governor, the commissioner of agriculture, the attorney general, and the state's chief financial officer. And all of the decisions of this board must be unanimous under this bill. It also creates a state immigration enforcement council made up of law enforcement, so sheriffs, police chiefs, FDLE agents appointed by the state board of immigration enforcement to provide advice on immigration enforcement. So this board would serve as a liaison with federal authorities for joint operations on immigration enforcement in the state. The bill also authorizes an agreement between the federal government and Florida where the Department of Homeland Security would provide training to state law enforcement officers and assisting federal agents to enforce immigration law. And there's more. It appropriates $250 million to hire and train new law enforcement officers in the state to help federal agents with immigration enforcement, and it provides $1,000 bonuses to law enforcement officers who are involved in homeland security immigration raids. It also pays for a new $48 million detention center in North Florida, somewhere in the I-10 corridor, to keep unauthorized immigrants who have been arrested. It also requires pre-trial detention for immigrants suspected of committing felonies. It makes it a felony to enter or re-enter Florida illegally, and this one was a real debate point, requires the death penalty for any undocumented immigrant who commits a capital crime, such as murder or rape of a minor. The bill also tries to target transnational gangs. And then here, the last point, it removes in-state tuition for the 6,500 Florida and college/university students who are not US citizens or legal residents.
That last issue that you just mentioned, Rick, there was a lot of debate in the second special session. What about this time around?
Well, over the last two days, this part of the bill particularly has what has brought the most passionate debate on the floor of the House and the Senate and in their various committees. Democrats have tried to amend the bill to save in-state tuition for those students who are enrolled right now and would lose this benefit on July 1st, this summer, and then they would see their tuition for the fall quadruple in price. And Democrats argue this would cause many of them to have to drop out of school. Democrats argued that it's unfair to pull the rug out from under these students while they're in college, and that the legislature was going back on a promise that they made 10 years ago when Republicans and Democrats voted to approve in-state tuition for these students, who were often called Dreamers. Senator Jason Pizzo, a Democrat who represents parts of Broward and Miami-Dade, where the majority of these 6,500 students attend college, sponsored this amendment. And Senator Carlos Guillermo Smith of Orlando spoke in defense of the amendment.
And I do have a message for those Dreamers who are here in the gallery or those who are listening at home. You are not illegal because no person is illegal. You are Floridians. You belong here.
But Senator Randy Fine, the Melbourne Republican who was a co-sponsor of the bill, said providing in-state tuition to students who may have grown up in Florida but are not US citizens is not fair to students from Florida or other states who are citizens.
The Dreamers that I worry about are the 2,000 students we know are not going to a Florida university of their choice because an illegal immigrant is there. What about their dreams?
In the end, Pizzo's amendment was voted down 22 to 14, and overall, the bill went forward, as presented by Republicans, to the overall legislature for a vote.
Okay, so what happens next, Rick?
Well, since Republicans hold a supermajority in both the House and the Senate, the bill was projected to be voted on and passed as the legislature was meeting at noon today. The bill got to the House for a final reading. Democrats tried to add amendments to blunt what they considered the harsher aspects of the bill. Representative Anna Eskamani of Orlando attempted to add an amendment to preserve temporary protected status of an estimated 200,000 Venezuelans in Florida, which was erased by the Department of Homeland Security earlier this month. Her Democratic colleagues also tried to amend the bill to get rid of the mandatory death penalty for capital crimes, calling it unconstitutional, and a host of other amendments to try to remove some of the harsher language and provisions of this bill. Debate continues into the afternoon, but anticipating victory in the outcome and eventual passage of this bill, the governor and the House and Senate leaders were expected and scheduled to give a joint news conference around 3 o'clock this afternoon.
Central Florida Public Media's Rick Brunson, thank you so much for breaking all this down.
Thank you for having me, Sharon.
There's more ahead here on Engage. A state lawmaker recently introduced the Crown Act, but all previous attempts to pass that legislation banning discrimination against hairstyles have failed in Florida. An Orlando hairstylist shares how race-based hair discrimination is part of day-to-day life for her clients. All of our shows are available on demand at cfpublic.org. This is Engage on Central Florida Public Media. You're listening to Engage on Central Florida Public Media. I'm Sharon Stone. A workplace study done by Dove found that black women's hair is 2.5 times more likely to be perceived as unprofessional. It also found that the majority of black women change their hair for a job interview, and many feel that wearing it straight leads to a more successful outcome. Legislation Creating a Respectful and Open World for Natural Hair Act, also called the Crown Act, was first introduced in California in 2019 to prohibit race-based hair discrimination at school or work. Here in Florida, State Senator Chevron Jones introduced a version of the Crown Act last week, knowing that five previous attempts at passing it in Florida failed. We asked Senator Jones to join Engage to explain why he thinks the act is necessary and what's different about this version of the bill.
One of the things that we have seen across the state of Florida in one instance, where we know that there are students who have been discriminated against based on the type of hairstyle that they have. About two years ago, a student was denied entry to his first day of school because of his dreadlocks were too long. A student was also prohibited from wearing his uniform because of his natural hair. Florida is a melting pot of different types of cultures and backgrounds, and individuals of a parent have a choice to send their child to a school that they desire to send them to. Now, and with the melting pot that we live in, we should ensure that those institutions are not discriminating against students when they go to those schools that their parents have chosen for them to go to.
The Crown Act was first introduced in California in 2019. Looking at Florida, it was introduced in state legislation 2023. Former State Senator Randolph Bracy, who represented Orange County, sponsored it in 2022. It went nowhere '21, 2020. My point is, it's not really going anywhere in Florida. Why isn't there broad-based support for this on a state level?
Well, I'm not sure why it's not broad-based support, and I know that the current political climate that we in makes it difficult for us to do that. But my hope is that we have narrowed it down enough to ensure that my colleagues on the other side of the aisle see that we want to make sure our students have access into going into these classrooms or schools, excuse me, of their parents' choice, and without any barriers for them being admitted into those schools. And I also think when we look at those students who are receiving dollars from the state of Florida, it's important that these are taxpayer dollars, and we should not be creating barriers where we are not allowing students to come into a school because of their particular hairstyle. And the last thing I'll say that this is, that the way that we are looking at getting this across the finish line in this next legislative session is conveying the message and hearing the voices of parents who have experienced this and taking their students to schools, and also ensuring that my colleagues understand the melting pot of a state that we live in.
You mentioned that this bill has been narrowed down further. Can you explain to me what's different this time and what is in writing this time?
Well, I think what we're looking at in this one is specifically for schools that's participating in the state school choice scholarship program, that they comply with the federal anti-discrimination laws, including those that's related to hairstyles. And it make it clear that if those schools that are violating these requirements, I mean, they will face financial penalties for it. And of course, I believe my colleagues probably would scale that back just a tad bit. I think a year's passed. It was from a, it was more broad and more of a mandate. Right now, we're looking at this particularly right in our schools, starting there with the hopes that we can grow some momentum as time progresses and see how this works from this angle first.
Who has prevented this from passing in the past?
My Republican colleagues have prevented this from passing in the past.
Why?
I can't answer that. You will have to ask them of why they haven't passed this in the past. I think this is easy. It's common sense. They passed it in Texas. Texas saw the need to ensure that you protect individuals with different hairstyles. And I'm sure there are other states that has done the same thing. So I can't speak for them.
And you do have some local ordinances in Broward County and Miami Beach that do protect against hair discrimination.
Yeah, and with the hopes of we can create some uniformity across the state of doing the same thing.
Let me ask you this. With all the efforts to eliminate DEI, do you have concerns that a bill like this could be tied to that DEI narrative?
Well, listen, the Republicans, in their terminology for the word DEI, in my terminology, in my clear definition of DEI, I think we are on two different spectrums right now. Because, I mean, across this country, we have made DEI the boogie word for a period. And my colleagues and their use of it, and even the attempt to equate hairstyle to DEI, if they want to, I'm sure they would. But this has nothing to do with diversity, equity, inclusion, but everything to do with ensuring that students have access. We want parents to have the choice. We want students to be educated. So we should not be creating barriers for them not to be able to do that.
Florida State Senator Chevron Jones is a Democrat representing part of the Miami-Dade area and filed the Crown Act last week. The Crown Act would create protections against discrimination based on hair texture and styles. Shaka Khan Stamper is an Orlando hairstylist and salon owner. 10 years ago, she left her corporate job and started a career as a hairstylist because it was something she was actually passionate about. Shaka Khan focused on natural hair that hasn't been chemically altered or colored. Today, she's a master loctician, a hairstylist specializing in dreadlocks, and the owner of The Locks Bar Orlando. I talked to Shaka Khan about how she has experienced hair discrimination in her life and how it impacts her clients. She starts her conversation by explaining the significance of having natural hair.
As we grew up in our community, and I'm not going to just say African-American community, I'm going to say just in a cultural community, we wanted, everyone wanted different hair. So we started to put chemicals in it. We either put chemicals in it to make it straight, or we put chemicals in it to make it curly. So just something that we weren't naturally born with. What this movement is, and I'm not going to say it's a movement, it's what our culture has realized is that we don't need those chemicals. So whatever your hair does, let it do it. So if you have kinky hair, if you just do nothing to your kinky hair, it will lock up. It will tangle, because we detangle all the time. So this will tangle. So what locks are, is the maintenance of tangled hair. That's my definition. So we're going to let the hair tangle, but we're going to maintain it. If you don't want to let it tangle, then you do protective styles, or you put products in it to keep it from tangling, which is people who have a loose natural hair. So a person looking in and say, okay, and again, it doesn't matter what race you are. If you don't comb your hair, it's going to tangle, it's going to tangle, which makes a lock. So I tell people, oh, anybody can get locks. What they look like depends on you. And so when we say it's in its natural state, I know some people say, well, when you color your hair, it's not in its natural state, and I completely agree. But when we say it's in its natural state, what we're doing is not changing the texture per se. We're not going to put anything to make it straight, and we're not going to put anything to make it curly. We're going to let it do its thing, and then we're going to maintain it that way. So what dreadlocks are, or locks, depending on where you're from, is the tangling of hair, but what we do is maintain the tangled hair and help it grow and let it be healthy.
How long have you been wearing your hair in locks?
10 years in April. So I decided to stop chemically treating my hair about 10 years ago. Actually, about 12 years ago, I stopped chemically treating it because the chemicals were burning my scalp. And I was like, okay, this is ridiculous. But when I let my natural hair grow out, it was thick and coarse, and maintaining it for me was hard. And I'm tender head, so it hurt. So I'm like, okay, I can't do that. So I decided to lock it. But at the time, I was in corporate America, and I was in an executive position, and doing that in my mind was a no-no. So I had to figure out, okay, what am I going to do to make sure I keep my job, which why Crown Act is so important, but to make sure I keep my job, but to be able to wear my hair in its natural state and maintain it. And so I decided to lock it 10 years ago. And when I decided to lock it, that's when I decided to leave corporate America, and because of the stereotypes, to be honest with you.
I want to talk more about that. I know just in my career as a TV news anchor, no one explicitly said to me, relax your hair, straighten your hair. But it was just kind of assumed if I wanted to advance. Is that what you experienced in corporate America, just the expectation that you were going to have straight hair?
Absolutely. So you're right. No one ever said it to me. No one ever said, this is how you have to wear your hair. But in an executive-level position as a black woman, and I was young at the time, I knew that there was a standard they were looking for. So not only just my performance, but what I look like when I sit in a boardroom, when I present, do a presentation, what I look like to my employees, having an expectation to my employees and making sure that I look like the expectation. So no one, again, explicitly ever said, you have to relax your hair. But the comments of, oh, nice hair, that's different today, those things, or the, oh, what are we doing with our hair today? Those comments came. And so I grew up in Montgomery, Alabama. So growing up in Alabama, I knew what those comments meant, or those insinuations meant. And it was, okay, make sure you're tamed. And not just growing up there, my grandmother and my mother instilled in me to stay well-groomed, keep your hair straight. This is what's considered as well-groomed. So when that's embedded in your head of this is what's considered well-groomed, you grow up saying, okay, this is what I have to do to be professional. So again, nobody ever said it, but that was the expectation, and it's ingrained in your mind. It's how you grow up. It's what's expected from you and your little girl.
With your clients at Orlando Locks Bar, do you feel like they've shared similar experiences to what you did and just the expectation to have their hair worn naturally?
Absolutely. Initially, now, I'm going to divide the clientele in the first five years, second five years. First five years, which is about 10, you know, 10 years ago, five, 10 years ago, I would get, I would love to start locks, but I can't because of my job. Or I would love to start locks because my job is not going to allow me to do that. Or, oh, my gosh, I just wish I could make them more professional. And when you have locks, you can't do your hair every day. You have to let it get frizzy. There is a stage that you go through where it's not very neat, per se. So I would hear, oh, yeah, my job would never let me do that. Or my position, you know, we have the attorneys, the doctors, the judges, they're like, no, I can't do that. I can't sit up there and my hair look like that. So that's what I got the first five years. Now, what I've learned, and what I've learned to say to help people is, you know, we can keep it maintained. I understand that there's a level of professionalism that you have, but locks are not professional. How you maintain them is what keeps them professional or not professional. So that's what I've learned to say. And I think now, as a culture and as a world, we are more accepting. We weren't as accepting as first. And so I think we've become more accepting only because people started to say, I don't care what other people think, I'm going to do it anyway. So it's become the majority. And I'm going to say that therefore down here in the South. I know up north, they've been doing this. So this wasn't anything new up north. But down here, I think we've learned to accept the culture of, hey, I'm going to be me, and you accept me based on my merit, not on what I look like. And I think that's kind of where we are now.
The legislation to create the Crown Act in Florida, creating a respectful and open world for natural hair, it's been introduced again. Why do you think this legislation is necessary?
Well, to be able to protect someone who wants to be themselves is necessary all around. And I know I hear people say, yeah, but your hair. And I say, yes, hair, especially in schools. I've seen videos where kids have had to cut their locks off or cut their hair because of what's going on at school. So protection for any right is necessary because people who don't understand go the opposite way. So when people don't understand my locks or my hair, they're like, okay, you can just cut it off. It'll grow back. I think that, again, legislature for anything at this point is necessary, especially in the world that we live in right now. If we don't, we give opportunity to discriminate based on something that's not covered. So, no, I can't discriminate off your skin color. No, I can't discriminate off of your gender. No, I can't discriminate off of your race, but I can discriminate on your hair. I think that tells me what background you have. So people look at people with locks and assume background a lot. They assume you're from the islands. They assume you don't comb your hair. They assume that you're not clean. So that protection allows us, one, to understand what's going on, so people can't look at that, they have to look at your merit. But two, it opens, to me, opens a dialogue. Okay, what is it about the hair that you don't like? I've sat in interview rooms and looking at resumes, and the person looks great on resume, and I hear someone say, yeah, but did you see their hair? I've heard that. And it's like, yeah, I saw their hair. What was up with the hair? Like, that's how they wear their hair. Well, is that the image we're looking for? Is that what we're going for? And it's like, okay, how did the hair reflect what we're going for? That's not on this job description. You know, so I think that having legislation helps cut that out. And I'm just going to say helps cut that out because, of course, people are going to do what they're going to do. But at least it gives way to base people on merit versus what they look like in any capacity.
What message do you think is being sent by the fact that it continues to fail year after year? And what message do you think would be sent if it passes?
I think that it'll help people, the consumer part of it, I think it'll help people understand they can be naturally who they are from head to toe. So I think that message says, okay, now I don't have to worry about going into this job interview, and because I have locks, that's what they're going to base my job off of. But from an employer standpoint or a school system standpoint, they're going to know, okay, I know I don't like what I see, but I can't base whatever we're doing off of what I see. I have to base it on something else. So now I have to find another avenue of judging someone for what I want. So if it's a job, I can't judge them off of their hair, I can't judge them off their skin, I can't judge them off of their age, I can't judge them off of those things. So wow, I have to actually look at their resume and listen to what they say and see if that's a fit, which is what it's supposed to be anyways. Whereas right now, again, people will walk in a room and it's like, oh, she has locks, she doesn't wash her hair, I don't want her here. And we can't, we do that. And then, again, that happens. We have companies here in Orlando that won't allow people to have locks. And if they have locks, the locks can't touch their shoulder, which is like the military. And it's like, the military used to be that way also. I have a lot of military clients that were so happy that they could wear their locks in the military. So we actually have that, and it's in their job descriptions, it's in their code of conduct, it's in their dress codes that you cannot have locks. I know the first five years, some major companies, and so it was hard to convince those young people, especially young people, hey, I know you have locks, let me figure out what we can do to your hair to quote-unquote hide the locks, or to pin them up, and hopefully they don't grow too long to where we can't pin them up to satisfy the need of the company. And I think that's sad. And I'm like, that has nothing to do with your job performance. Your hair has nothing to do with your job performance. Or you have those sports that say, okay, for safety reasons, we're going to cut your locks, but we're not cutting people with straight hair for safety reasons. So I've heard that. It's safety reasons. I'm like, okay, so straight hair is not, not, not... And so I've had those conversations with parents, I've had those conversations with employers, I've had those conversations with employees that are sitting in my chair and were trying to figure out how to appease their lifestyle with their hair. And that's, I think that's crazy. I think that's crazy.
What do you say to people who explicitly say or just imply that natural hair locks are not professional?
I mean, I've heard that, and it's your preference, it's your opinion, if you're the CEO of that company, that is totally up to you. But then I also counteract that with, what is your definition of professional? That's what I ask. And sometimes I get back, well, yeah, you can't, what is your definition of professional? I understand the hair can't, you don't like the hair standing on top of the head. But if my hair grows up, I can't help that it's standing on my head. That's the way my hair grows. My hair doesn't grow down. It grows down now because it's long. But naturally, my hair grows up. So to tell me that my hair growing up is not professional is ridiculous. To tell me I need to be well-groomed, maintained is our different words, but the word professional is in the eye of the beholder. And I always tell people, that's in the eye of the beholder, and I would also challenge you to ask that company or that school, what do you consider professional, so I can see if I'm able to comply, because I may not be able to comply, so this may not be for me. But again, while we're having a conversation about my hair, when you called me in based on what you saw on paper?
Shaka Khan Stamper is the owner of The Locks Bar Orlando. Coming up, love's in the air on the eve of Valentine's Day, and for many, chocolate is the go-to to celebrate. We'll find out if science supports the appeal of the sweet treat. You're listening to Engage on Central Florida Public Media. You are listening to Engage on Central Florida Public Media. I'm Sharon Stone. Just a reminder here, Valentine's Day is tomorrow. One of the most popular gifts for sweethearts is chocolate. Here is where I have a confession. I am fully aware that what I am about to say is a very unpopular opinion. I don't like chocolate. You have every... You have every right to raise your eyebrow at me and be puzzled by that statement. The National Retail Federation expects Americans to spend $2.5 billion on candy for Valentine's Day. And chocolate is the most popular. How could I not savor that flavor of chocolate when it makes so many other people just melt? I went to Robin Beck, Associate Professor at UCF's Rosen College of Hospitality Management, who teaches about taste for some answers. He joined Engage to talk about why people buy chocolate for Valentine's Day, why they love, or in my case, don't love the flavor. And I started our conversation by asking if there's a genetic explanation for why people enjoy taste.
It's really about what we may refer to as taste. It may be genetics because some people are sensitive, more sensitive to the bitterness in chocolate, especially dark chocolate. So you may find it too bitter. But others, um, don't like the texture of chocolate or don't like the flavor of chocolate. People may find it too rich or too sweet. Or like anything, you know, just not to their taste. Yeah. If we go to a restaurant and there's a dish on the menu, we both order it. I may love it. You may not like it at all. And it doesn't mean there's anything wrong with it. It just means that we have different tastes.
You mentioned genetics. Does that mean that some people are genetically predispositioned to like the taste of something while others are, you know, expected not to?
It can be genetics. It can be the taste senses we have on our tongue and how sensitive we are to different tastes. It may also be cultural, you know, a, a lot of what we eat or don't eat is cultural. And what we have grown up with and what is acceptable as food. You know, there are foods in some countries that are the norm and other countries you'll go, you eat that. And, uh, you know, it's really just what is the, the cultural norm. You know, I come from South Africa where I like, um, mopani worms, which are sort of dried caterpillar. But, um, you know, other people see that and it grosses them out. So, you know, it's cultural.
Well, I'm certainly not here to judge you. I can't say that I have enjoyed the taste of that myself, but it makes the point that we all like different things.
Things, right.
I think my question is, what is taste? How much of it is what you respond or you receive on your tongue versus like what you smell?
Right. Well, what we think of as taste is what we get on our palate. So on our palate, all that we get is sweet, sour, salty, bitter, and umami, which is savory, you know, like mushrooms or soy sauce. That we get on our palate. But flavor is olfactory. It's all about our sense of smell. So we don't taste flavor. We smell flavor. So think about when you've got a cold and you're all banged up and you don't taste anything. Why? It's not because there's anything wrong with your palate, with your taste senses on your tongue. It's about not being able to smell. So if you want to try a little experiment on that, get yourself some jelly bellies. Pinch your nose really tight and take a random jelly belly and put it in your mouth. Chew it really well and see what you taste. And all you're going to taste is that it's sweet. You're not going to get any flavor at all. And you know, jelly bellies are very flavorsome.
Yeah, like jelly beans, right?
After you've done that for about 30 seconds, unpinch your nose and you'll go, because suddenly you get that burst of flavor and you know what the flavor of the jelly belly is rather than that it's just something sweet in your mouth.
My mind's a little bit blown by that. I know you work with the Science Center and do similar exercises. How do people react to that experiment?
Well, I've, you know, I've done that experiment in a lot of different settings for different groups. And what I usually do is I have a wine that I get them to taste first. And it's usually a very simple wine, maybe a sweet fruity wine, Zinfandel, right? So I'm not advocating that as, uh, as something, you know, you either like it or you don't. But it's got a very specific taste. It's sweet. It's fruity. It's easy to identify. So I get people to taste that. And, you know, they'll say it's sweet. It's fruity. I like it. I don't like it. I get strawberries on the palate, whatever. Then I get them to do the jelly belly test. So they hold their nose, chew the jelly belly, release their nose and go, ah, because they get that boost of flavor. Then I say, now taste the wine again. And suddenly you get everyone going, ah, because it's suddenly bitter. The sweetness is gone. The fruitiness is gone and it's bitter and it tastes awful, which really demonstrates how the taste on your palate is going to change the taste of something else that you eat or drink afterwards. So it applies to wine, but it really applies to everything, which is why it's so important to pair food and wine correctly. You know, because you hear people saying, oh, it doesn't matter. Just eat what you want and drink what you want, which is fine, but you may actually find that a very lovely wine suddenly tastes terrible because you've paired it incorrectly.
People have a response to something they eat. People just had emotional connection or it took them to a certain place or certain memory. Is that biological? Is that a science? Or is that more just like a memory induced response?
It may be a memory induced or it may just be something that they love. You know, chocolate is, is considered to be, um, to be indulgent. You know, it's rich. It's creamy. It has this texture that melts in your mouth. Um, it's sweet. So, you know, it's often that kind of responses. Why? I know you don't like chocolate, Sharon. That's why a lot of people do.
I know I'm in the minority there. I know I'm, I'm the problem. Yes.
And of course, you know, there's chocolate and there's chocolate. There are a lot of different qualities of chocolate. You know, you get, you know, very inexpensive chocolates that may not be made with the highest quality ingredients. And you get very expensive handmade chocolates where they do use the highest quality of ingredients. So, you know, like anything, there are different quality levels. Now that doesn't necessarily determine what we like and what we don't like. So, you know, I may prefer an inexpensive chocolate because I think it's delicious. And I may not like the very expensive chocolate truffle because it's maybe too rich or too dark or, or whatever. So price is never determinant of taste.
This idea of like eating chocolate and celebrating Valentine's Day, having around holidays, use it to say, I'm sorry, is that something exclusive here? Or is that something that you also would find in like South Africa where you're from?
I think you find it in, in a lot of countries. You know, for Valentine's Day, people often buy foods, um, that signify love and often, you know, indulgent things such as chocolate. People often buy it as gifts. You're going to, to someone for dinner and you want to take a gift to your, your hosts. You, you're going on a date and you want to take a gift. It's Valentine's Day and you want to take a gift. You know, it's often chocolate or flowers or wine. Yeah, or maybe all three. But, you know, they're considered sort of to be luxury indulgent things. People talk about good taste and bad taste. What makes taste good? You know, we talk about good taste, right? We talk about people having good taste. But is there really such a thing as good taste and bad taste? Or do people just have different tastes? Yeah, um, I think we all think we have good taste, right? Because our taste is what we like. But it's really a very subjective concept with good taste often being used synonymously with expensive tastes. And as I, you know, said previously, expensive taste is not necessarily good taste. And what we think of good taste is often culturally determined as well as to what is good taste and what is bad taste. So we really shouldn't try to impose our perceived good taste on others. So an example, when I teach a wine class, I, my, the first question I ask my students is, how can you tell if a wine is a good wine? So I'm gonna ask you, Sharon, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interview you now. How can you tell if a wine is a good wine?
I'm sure there is some kind of swirling in the glass method and knowing the legs. However, I would just define good wine as the wine I like. And I probably would associate it with if it costs more, it's good wine.
And that is the correct answer. Okay. So my students all look at me blankly as to, I have no idea. My answer is, if you like it. If you like it, it's a good wine. If you don't like it, it's not. And you should drink and eat, for that matter, what you like and not what other people tell you you should like. You know, especially with wine, you get wines novels will say, you like that? That's awful. Try this. It's much better. You know, but if I think that what I'm drinking is better because I prefer it, then I'm going to drink it and I should be able to drink it. However, what I do also tell my students is, if you learn more about wine and increase your knowledge, you're going to become more adventurous. You're going to learn how to pair wines with different foods. And then I assure you, you're going to find more wines that you actually do like than the wines that you currently like. So it's going to open you to that exploration. And the same really applies to food. You know, in my class, one of the pairings I do is a goose liver pate on a cracker with some sweet wine. Because pate and liver actually goes nicely with a sweet wine. And most students, being here in the US where we tend not to eat awful, turn their nose like a liver. Oh, that's terrible. I'm gonna, you know, I want to try that. And I say to them, you know, I'm not your father. I can't force you to eat what you don't want. But I'm going to encourage you to go outside your comfort zone and just give it a try. And if you don't like it, you never need to touch it again. But at least give it a taste. And most of them go, oh, okay. And they give it a taste. And some students don't like it, but the majority of them go, oh, this is not as bad as I thought it was going to be. So, you know, as we learn about different, different foods and wines, if we increase our education, we can also increase our, you know, our palate in terms of what's appealing to us.
That's so interesting. Uh, I feel both a desire to open my mind to more foods, but I also feel oddly empowered to say, you know what? I don't want chocolate for Valentine's Day. I want ice cream. Because that is what I want.
Absolutely. And, 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 and that's the way it should be. And, you know, some of my students have said that to me as well. I've said, it was actually liberating to be told that I didn't have to like what everyone else likes.
Robin Beck is the Assistant Dean for Academic Policy at UCF's College of Undergraduate Studies and an Associate Professor at the Rosen College of Hospitality Management. I wanted to see where the rubber hit the chocolate road. So I grabbed Engage producer Richard Copeland and we headed over to the Maitland Chocolate Factory. Upon entering the strip mall store, we were immediately hit with an intense smell of cocoa. Not a cloyingly sweet smell, rather an earthy nutty kind of tone. The store looked like a mini Wonka factory. Meticulously detailed confections covered every surface of the chocolate shop owned and operated by Vivian Viteri.
Oh, the turtles. Turtles are caramel and pecan inside and then covered with chocolate. Those are most popular ones in the store. Also, the Oreo cookies, Oreo cookies, we have them in milk, dark and white. Um, those are very popular with the kids. And then we have smores and that's Graham crackers with marshmallows dipped in chocolate with some sprinkles on top. And, oh, we also have the sugar free. Sugar free is very popular for people, you know, that has diabetes.
Vivian immigrated to the United States from Ecuador as a young woman. She locked down a part-time job at the candy store as a student at UCF. She didn't expect it would turn into a career.
So I started working here as a part-time and then, um, um, like, yeah, like 20 years ago. And when I was going to school, so, um, when I graduated from UCF, I decided to start, um, my career. And then after a year and a half, when I left the store, the owner, um, called me and he said that he's selling the business. So I decided to buy it. And then that's how it started working. I mean, like, working by myself as an owner.
And therein lies the irony. Vivian never tried chocolate until adulthood. She says it's simply not part of the culinary culture of Ecuador. But once she discovered the cocoa-y concoctions, she was hooked.
The first time I tried, I gained like 30 pounds. Yeah, because I was drinking hot chocolate, like three cups a day. And then trying every truffle that I was making or they were teaching me how to do it. So yeah, definitely. I got, I gained 30 pounds. And that's, that's not a joke. It is true.
Obviously, Valentine's Day is a big deal for Vivian. After Christmas, it's the most important day of the year for her business. One of the shop's specialties is their chocolate-covered strawberries. Plump and ripe, the bright crimson fruit are coated in Vivian's dark milk and white chocolates. I asked her how many she expects to move across her counter for Valentine's.
Uh, I would say like 5,000 strawberries, something like that. Yeah, because we have, we buy like, uh, like 20 containers a day, like for the week. So, yeah. And like each container has like 30 or something like, yeah. Depends, because sometimes they have bad ones and you, I always pick the big ones. You know, so the customers get the better quality and the best chocolate with the strawberry.
The shelves were stacked with heart-shaped candy boxes of varying sizes and shades of scarlet and pink. Clearly, there's a connection between chocolate and matters of the heart. Vivian shared her take on why chocolate is the go-to gift for all things romantic.
Because it's sweet and then, you know, then you become like more sweeter with your, um, with your partner. And then also, you know, some people remember memories from when they were a child. Like I have many customers that they come and they're like, oh, my mom used to give me these number L's and dark chocolate. Or I used to come when I was 10 years old with my parents and always picking up chocolates. And they always give me the stories about, you know, when they were a child. So that's very, very nice.
What Vivian said about chocolate eliciting memories sounded good. Unfortunately, I had some trouble identifying with this. I never ate it as a child.
How does that work?
I was allergic to chocolate. That's, that's why I love coffee flavored, because my parents gave me something else brown to eat that I wasn't allergic to. So that's why I love coffee flavored things.
I guess my father was a chocolate guy. I grew up in a house with people that ate a lot of chocolate. I remember the big boxes of Nestle Quick powder to make the chocolate milk. But I'm also from a part of Pennsylvania that's very close to Hershey. We're near Palmer Chocolates. And those are the people that make all the Easter bunnies and, and Santa Clauses and things like that. And Wilbur Chocolate near Lancaster, Pennsylvania. So I kind of grew up in this weird triangle of chocolate. And I feel like that's sort of informed me more than I realize now that I've spent as much time as I have in here.
Core memory of chocolate?
Core memory of chocolate. Chocolate in the Keystone State.
One of my sisters, actually, when I was growing up, it was an Easter egg basket. She said, hand me one of those chocolate footballs. It's like, do you mean eggs? Yes. And that makes entirely more, much more sense than a football at Easter. Despite my deeply ingrained dislike of chocolate, how could I not at least try some of Vivian's wares? I felt it was my duty to consume at least one piece of Maitland chocolate. And Vivian offered up a tiny, yet decadent, dark chocolate truffle.
Not bad, huh?
It's good.
I feel like you've been short chocolate changed your entire life.
You may be on to something.
I think if you like set your metrics at like a Mars bar, you're gonna, you're, you're not gonna win. If you set your, your baseline on this, it could only get better.
I think you have unlocked the mystery to why I didn't like chocolate. I just didn't have the right chocolate enter my life yet.
Vivian, look at, look what a wonderful job you've done of enlightening Sharon.
I'm amazed to see her face, how she enjoys the chocolate. That's lovely.
You're a miracle worker.
That was Vivian Viteri, who with her husband owns and operates the Maitland Chocolate Factory. That's all for today's edition of Engage. I'm Sharon Stone. Thank you for joining us. All Things Considered is coming up following NPR News.